And the judges or judges are all there like observing the students, are they coming out and they're interacting with people? It's just kind of fun. And the kids are really learning so much now too, I think. Yeah.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our February 4th, 2020 Town Council meeting. Thank you all for being here. We'll turn the time right now over to Councilmember Cook to assist us with the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have a special guest. This is Clara, and Clara is the daughter of Jessica. Yes, Marla. So, hi, Mom. So Clara's going to lead us in the pledge allegiance, so if we can all stand. And Clara, there is a flag over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well Clara, that was fantastic. How about a round of applause for Clara? Clara, don't leave yet. We give a special gift to all our young people. So this is a pocket constitution of the United States. So we would like your mom to memorize it, and she can tell you all about it. Would that be all right? All right, well, thank you. There we go, Mayor.
Thank you Clara, and thank you Councilmember Cook. At this time, we would like to invite Pastor Rick Oller to come to the podium to offer our invocation. Pastor Oller is from the Sunrise Assembly of God, and great group.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here, and let's pray together. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in our beautiful community as we celebrate 100 years. We thank you for your many blessings. And again, tonight, we ask for your wisdom and insight to be given to our town leaders. We pray for the staff. We pray for those in public safety in our community, that you will strengthen them and give them wisdom and safety on the streets. And we just ask, Father, that you will help this city to continue to grow, and Lord, that there be a sense of family that would continue to be in this community that's been there for 100 years. We thank you for your many blessings, and again, for your faithfulness. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rick. You also serve as one of our chaplains for Police Department, correct? Fire. Oh, I got them mixed up. Sorry, fire. I was trying to figure out who claimed you, but we all claim you, so thank you for being here. All right, we do have a couple of proclamations and presentations today. We'll first go to Councilmember Cook for our Cactus Yards team.
Thank you, Mayor. The first recognition is going to be a recognition of our Cactus Yards for winning the Outstanding Park of the Year Award for 2019, presented by the United States Specialty Sports Association. So I don't know if anyone from there or here, well, please come over here, and I think you're going to do the presentation. Is that what you're going to do? All right, thank you. Oh, please. I think we have Rick and Eric, correct? And Cory.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Rick Peralta. I'm accompanied by partner Eric Bell, Corey Peralta. We are Arizona Baseball State Directors of the United States Sports Specialty Association, which represents 13 different sports and the largest multiple-sport sanctioning body in the United States. There are many factors that our customers consider when voting on the Outstanding Park of the Year, which some include park amenities, appearance, cleanliness, maintenance, food selection, quality pricing. Craft culinary received really high scores, and pretzels were mentioned as the overall favorite item offered. Many Gilbert residents commented that they appreciate the town not charging gate fees for the residents, and also the discounts on food and beverage. We've even had some non-residents say they were relocating to Gilbert just because of it. Park staff customer service received the highest possible score of 10, with many compliments on maintenance of the fields, which were lacking in recent years. And all 10 categories are ranked 0 to 10, and the overall score for the Cactus Yards was 9.9, which is the highest score ever recorded for this award. Most parks in their first year of opening usually have a lot of issues to work out, or a learning curve is how we put it. But the staff at Cactus Yards, under the leadership of Robert, John, Dan, George, Trevor, Maria, and Harold, just to name a few, hit the ground running the park to the perfection right out of the gate. I held the first tournament played at Cactus Yards in mid-February of 2019 during the President's holiday weekend. The positive customer comments were overwhelming compared to recent years of another organization running the park before it was closed for lack of maintenance and major safety concerns. In closing, our staff and customers appreciate the town, taking back the park, and making the decision to operate it. Cactus Yards is the best overall ballpark in the state of Arizona for our baseball tournaments and leagues. It's also now nationally recognized to out-of-state teams as the place they want to play, bringing an economic impact to the community. We look forward to a long partnership with the town of Gilbert, and congratulations on the deserved award from USSA.
Yeah, gentlemen, why don't we come over here, and we'll take a wonderful picture? Would that be all right? And if we can have
All of our awesome teams.
All of our parks team members come up here as well. And we'll do a really nice photo op.
While they're coming up, I just want to make one additional comment, and thank you so much for recognizing the hard work of this team, because they took on a challenge amongst many other challenges in one year. They opened three brand-new parks in Gilbert last year. Three new parks in one year that this team opened. So they are professionals in every sense of the word. So thank you for recognizing their work. We're cheering them on, too.
All right, so Robert's going to accept it on behalf. So we'll have Robert up here in the front with the team, and we'll take a nice, nice picture.
Great job, you guys. Thank you. All right. We will move to Agenda Item 1A.
All right, Amy Entes. I'm happy to be able to proceed with this next proclamation. Sorry, I'm a little congested, but I've been using copious amounts of hand sanitizer. So if I could ask Stacy Johnson to come up, who, well, I'm going to give her the time to do most of the talking because of all this, but she's with the American Heart Association, and together, we're going to declare February the month of Go Red for Women Month, and she can explain a little bit more about what her organization does, their cause, and why this is so important.
Great, thank you. And thanks, Mayor Daniels, for your support. Oh, it's great. She's pointing out her red dress pin, which Daniel has one on as well. So this is my son, Daniel. I'm a Gilbert resident, and for the last five years, we've been lucky enough to have the city of Gilbert recognize Go Red for Women Month. So heart disease is the number-one killer of men and women, and one in every 80 seconds, I think, is the statistic. It's a pretty big number. So the idea is to build awareness for this, because approximately 80% of our risk factors can be mitigated by lifestyle changes. And so the ask to the community is on this Friday, February 7th, to wear red so that you can build awareness for heart disease and stroke, as the American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association are one unit. So what we do is we are advocates, and we are part of an ambassador board that goes to activities in the community to build awareness. And then, can I grab this real fast? So I want to just read a couple of the elements. So women have a higher lifetime risk of stroke than men. An increase in community awareness is necessary to encourage everyone to go red. And it's really awesome that the town of Gilbert supports this advocacy work and prioritizes their citizens.
Perfect, thank you. Did your son want to say anything? Okay, well, we're going to take a picture here.
Thank you, Stacy, and for your family and all the tremendous work you do in our community.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Stacy. We will move to Agenda Item 1B, the annual update for Gilbert Sister Cities. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Greg Tilke down to the podium to present to us. He's going to present the annual update to the Gilbert Sister Cities program, and Greg is this year, serving as this year's president of the program. Thanks for being here, Greg.
You bet, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Daniels, members of the council. As mentioned, Greg Tilke, president of Gilbert Sister Cities, here tonight to give you an update on what we've been doing the last year. Before I get into the details, I would like to recognize Councilmember Peterson for all of her support as our council liaison. She's been great to work with. She's always there to lend a helping hand, and really appreciate your support. I also want to thank Valerie Schaefer, who's been our new staff liaison this year to the board, and she's also there all the time. She was there for our event last night, to help before, to help set up, and very much appreciate it. For the benefit of the audience, oops, let me talk a little bit about Sister Cities and how it was started. We started in 1995 and have two sister cities. The first, Antrim Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, a city of about 145,000 people. It's right outside of Belfast. We started that program, that relationship, November 17th, 1998, and signed a 20-year update to that agreement in 2018. Our second sister city is LaShawn, China, and that city was, the agreement was signed on June 4th, 2002. LaShawn has a population of about 4.5, 5 million people, and they sit about 1,500 miles southwest of Beijing, and about an hour and a half from Chengdu, which is one of Phoenix's sister cities. We've had a very busy year this past year. You see some of the events there. We started the first time ever a Mother's Day tea, kind of in honor of our Irish sister city. We've been involved with the Gilbert Global Village Festival. In fact, I think we were one of the co-founders way back in the day of getting that thing started with the town. You see a few other events we've been involved with. Last night, we had our East-West Gilbert Fest, our annual event. Goes back to the days when Mayor Daniels was our liaison to the, to the board, did our logo for us. Appreciate that. Still using it today. And also, thanks to councilmembers Anderson and Ray and Peterson last night for showing up for our event. We had 75 people there. It was a great, great turnout. We're also in the midst of our youth ambassador program, choosing our students for this year. We'll have two students go to each city, and our counterparts will send two as well from their cities. And this program has really expanded over the years, and they go for about two to three weeks in the summer in each place, and then the families have a real chance to gain some insight into what other cultures are all about. We'll choose the final students on February 21st, so we're looking forward to that. Couple of things we've added this last year or two, last year and expanded this year are some clinics that we have. We thought some, we saw some skills lacking in some of the students, so we started doing a donation clinic, because they have, one of the things we asked them to do is go out and get some donations for our event that we had last night. So we brought in Tad Peeland from Joe's Barbecue and talked about, here's what you do when you go in and ask for a donation, here's how you get it. And we also started one on interview clinic. We started an essay clinic and a few more, so we're really excited about that. The kids have really enjoyed that. The parents have seen great growth in the students going through those programs, so looking forward to that. This year again, we also added, at the direction of our board member, who's being recognized after this, Suzanne Lunt, started getting our kids more involved and thinking about others, and so we started the Feed My Striving, started working with the Feed My Striving Children program to have them participate there. But we also started a few years ago, English Book Drive for English books that we bring to LaShawn, and the kids bring it over when they go in the summer. That was at their request, and they really enjoy it. They have a section in the library of English books, and Suzanne has helped collect those over the years as well. In September, I gave you a report on our Seshwan International Expo, Travel Expo we went to, to LaShawn. Myself, Kathy, and one of our board members, Tim Smith, went on that trip. The exciting part of that was Antrim Newton Abbey also went on that trip, and they've signed a partnership agreement to, a letter of intent to move forward, and we've, long time had an idea to try to get a three-way partnership, and this looks like it's going to happen. There actually, it looks like Antrim Newton Abbey is going over to LaShawn something in the next couple of weeks. So we're looking forward to that, and can't wait for that to happen. Going forward, this next year, we want to continue to grow the membership. Fundraising is always a big thing in a nonprofit. We want to do that. We'll continue with the events that we've outlined from this past year, planning a spring trip to Antrim Newton Abbey. And the exciting part of this one is that we're, and we're working with the town very closely to get some businesses to go with us. We hope to have three or four businesses. As you know, last year, they brought about eight, six or eight businesses out here, so we're looking to return the favor and get some connections from the business standpoint. We also plan, we hope, for the 100-year celebration at Gilbert Days, we'll have delegations from both of our sister cities. We've never had them both here at the same time, so we're looking forward to having that happen. And we'll continue on with our youth ambassador program and all of the things we've talked about there. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, and again, appreciate your support, long-term support of our Gilbert Sister Cities program.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, don't go away. We have one more thing we need to do tonight. Suzanne, we're glad you're here.
Suzanne, thank you for coming down and joining me, because I want to recognize you for your time and efforts with this program. She's been working with Gilbert Sister Cities for 20 years now, and I can say that I think your family has been changed because of the participation in this program. Curtis, for example, went to China, and it changed the trajectory of his plans in his life, correct? And he now speaks fluent Chinese, because I've had dinner with him with our Chinese delegation, and he was doing all the talking and all the translating, because I know two words, ni hao and xi xie. So that's it. So we wanted to recognize you for all of your time and efforts. We've talked about the connections that you've made through the program, through your family has made through the program, and we figured out that we probably would have never met in Gilbert if it wasn't for this program and me being able to be your liaison, which I love being able to do. So we have a certificate of appreciation for you, and it says, "As Mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my pleasure to recognize Suzanne Lunt for 20 years of service to the Gilbert Sister Cities Board. Suzanne has made significant contributions to Gilbert Sister Cities, including serving as president of the board for two years. Suzanne served as the chair of the youth ambassador program, where she introduced volunteerism as a crucial component and helped establish the program for years to come. On behalf of Gilbert, of the Gilbert Town Council and as Mayor of Gilbert, we thank you for your 20 years of service and commitment to Gilbert Sister Cities."
Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Get them first.
Suzanne is one of the great Gilbert contributors, so thank you, Suzanne. Last but not least, our Gilbert Parks and Recreation Foundation has a presentation. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the pleasure of serving on, as a council liaison to our Parks and Recs team, and we have some fantastic folks from our Gilbert Parks Foundation. And Bill, if you can come up with your team, and Robert? Did Robert leave again? No, Robert, can you bring your team up as well? Either way, Bill, you can, you can speak from there, but if we can have the team here, and Bill has a wonderful thing to share with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, town manager. The Gilbert Parks and Recreation Foundation, and by the way, I'm Bill Skell, so just introduce myself again. Our foundation was founded a little under four years ago, with the idea that we were going to identify and obtain resources to benefit the Gilbert Parks and Recreation Department so that they could better serve this community. So to do that, we identified key members of our community to be part of our board, and these members are outstanding people. Many of them went through your leadership school. Some of them are top leaders now in the community. And to do the fundraising, we came up with a variety of ideas. This past year, we helped with a major dinner group at the Water Tower, and we were cosponsors of that, and one of our members is always at these events. We helped with the sponsorship of the concert at the Higley Performing Arts Center, and Andrea, I think you were there for that one. And then we have also done major events. Our big annual fall dinner is held here on the park, right outside the building, and from that, and with the support of a variety of companies, this is all private money, none of this is public funds. We pay for any service we use. Each of us, all the board members, contribute every year to be a member. And so we raised over 15 million, 15,000, excuse me, I wish it was 15 million, 15,000 from that. Plus, this year, we have a new item, another foundation asked us to help with bike safety here, and with the help of Robert and his staff, we have received 25,000, which we want to present at a different time to you. What we're here tonight is to present 15,000 for the GAP program. That's to help families in Gilbert who their children cannot afford to participate in classes. And to determine their eligibility, we use the school lunch program designations. So these children are all able to go to the wonderful programs and events that happen here. We also go after grants when available, and we've worked with SRP and others, and Rocky has been particularly helpful to us with that in obtaining grants, and we're going to continue to do that to match funds. By the way, when we do have our annual dinner, several of you have been there, and I appreciate that. Councilman Cook was here this year, and Councilmember Peterson, and she, by the way, has all the bund cakes anybody ever wants. She won bund cakes for the year, and she told me not to bid against her. So I know she has bund cakes, and if she's holding back from the rest of you, ask for bund cakes. Anyway, can I have the board members introduce themselves?
I'm Andrea Maruho. I'm a board member. I live in the community, and I wanted to give back. Several of my kids have done various programs for the Park and Rec, and I was excited to be a part of giving back to the community we live in, so.
I'm John Christensen. I'm the treasurer, and I've lived in the community for almost 10 years. I went through the Gilbert Leadership Program, and that's when I realized, eh, it's time to give back now, and I've been involved in a number of nonprofits, and this is one of my favorites, so it's always great to give back to the community.
Hi, my name is James Walker. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm also a assistant principal at Higley High School. Was part of Gilbert Leadership, and also I'm on the board for the sister cities as well, so founding the Parks and Rec Foundation, a great opportunity to see that from a couple different perspectives of a father, a citizen, and also as an educator. So it's a great opportunity to help out.
Well, thank you. Let us all come over here, and Bill, we're going to take a photo as you so kindly provide this to Robert and his team. Would you guys like to be part of the picture? Bill is requesting your presence here. Now, I do remember, because I remember we were dropping the raffle tickets in, and you said, "Don't put any in the bund cake." Can we have a round of applause for the Gilbert Parks Foundation and the 15,000?
The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook. Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Entes.
Here.
Acquarius present.
Thank you. Are there any requests to speak from the citizens?
Mayor, let me inquire a little bit before, we have one from Galvin, but you did not indicate if there was a specific item. Which one was it? Next, we'd like to ask Claudia Obermeyer to come up to the podium. Claudia, if you would give us your full name and place of residence, and then we will set the clock for three minutes.
My name is Claudia Obermeyer, and I live in Gilbert, Arizona, and I have lived here since 1984, when my husband retired from the Army. I was here in the chambers two years ago about a cat problem in the neighborhood. It is now a terrible health hazard to the area. My neighbor, Mr. Greg Creek, is putting food in the park for both the alley cats in the area and the birds. I have a, I have a list of 16 signatures from the neighbors and didn't have to ring the doorbells. People were in their front yards or walking their dogs, and all of them signed and wrote their addresses on the sheet. Eddie has the list. Their complaints were the mess from the cats on their lawns, plants, and flowers, all chewed up, and cats on their roofs. I guess I have the blunt of the damage. Three large screens are ruined, and I have large windows. Also, all the paint is off the bottom of my garage door. Greg has 20 or so cats in the house and feeding just as many, if not more, alley cats. The noise when they fight with each other is terrible. When I went to the mailbox at 6:30 PM last week, there were dozens and dozens of cats running around the park. It's a small park in the 500 block of East Encinas, down from the old Gilbert Junior High School off of Burke. Sometimes there are 50 or so birds in a circle in the park eating. When a man down the street hit one of the birds by accident, he went to his house and accused of him hitting one of his birds and threatened to kill his dogs. I had a break-in one and a half years ago, and the police found eight alley cats in my house. I had to move out, and it cost me plenty. I needed all-new carpet and linoleum. If all these alley cats weren't being fed and drawn next door, maybe I wouldn't have had to leave. A nurse at my church told me this is a terrible health hazard with the food and drinks placed in the park. Please help the people that live in the area of the park. Denny Barney was kind enough to build for his neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda. Are there any requests for the consent agenda besides Agenda Item 5? Anything from the council? Entertain a motion?
I move we approve Items 3, 3A. I move we approve Items 3, 3A. In 3A, I might note that the correct address was changed to the northeast corner of East Jermaine Road and South Mustang Drive. Item 4, Item 6, and Item 7.